Say thank you to everybody for joining us today, all staff and board members that are present, all of our community members who are watching, thank you for joining us tonight. We're glad to have you with us today. Just a couple of housekeeping items, I know we've been sharing a few things, but I do want to say, welcome to Leslie Smith, who is our new board clerk, who is joining us for her first official meeting as our board clerk. So we are very excited to have you with us, Leslie, and excited to have you working with us and our board and our staff. So, thank you very much for accepting and for being with us. She has been with our district for a long time, and so it's great to see that history with our community and our district. And you are going to be a huge value to our board, and so we're looking forward to working with you. And I can tell you, you're going to have a tough time keeping me in line. That's going to be a lot of work. Good luck to you. But again, thank you, Leslie, for that. And as we heard a little earlier, some folks were congratulating Mr. Birch, Edwin, and your team. You all did an outstanding job with convocation this week. So, you know, it's not ideal, I'm sure. It's always better, you know, when we can be in person and hug each other and welcome each other. But you and your team did a fabulous job of putting something together that was quality, that was first class, that was reflective of our district and our community, and that hopefulness and resiliency, and just that, that community feel. So I want to thank you and your team and the entire staff that worked so hard to put that together, for making that happen. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for the support.
Thank you. And then, you know, I want to welcome Dr. Faust, who is with us today for his last official board meeting with us as our superintendent. So we're going to drag this out till midnight, just to keep you a little late tonight, so you have something to remember us by, Dr. Faust.
No, we're not, Dr. Faust.
I'm going to add some exceptions just for you.
Thank you.
No, we're not. I don't know how, but I'll shut it down.
We don't like if anyone's on this call for that. So anyways, so just want to say thank you, Dr. Faust, and we'll have some more comments for you later. I don't want to hold this up too, too, too much now, but thank you for, for everything that you've done for our district these past two years. You've been a leader, and we appreciate your, your service to Kansas City, Kansas, and to our district and our students and families. So, thank you so much. And then I also want to say, thank you to Dr. Miguel, and welcome. And she is sitting in her first official meeting as our interim superintendent. So we are very excited to have you with us as in your new role. And I understand you and Dr. Faust have become bestest of bestest friends these past couple of days. So there will be an easy, easy transition as we continue to move forward. So, just wanted to get those housekeeping things out of the way. Again, welcome, everybody. Glad to have you, and we will continue to move forward with our meeting, so to get some things done today. So, before we do, I do want to reread our board norms, as we do at every board meeting, just as a reminder for all of us on how we conduct ourselves as a board. So, as a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. We agree to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. To stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. To never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. To read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine we are following our norms when conducting district business. So that's just a little reminder for everyone. So with that, I would ask Bridget, or Leslie, I'm not sure who's doing the roll call this afternoon.
I'm handling it this time, but Leslie, she's on it.
Perfect.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, present.
Jamie Humphries?
Jamie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Wanda Bradley Page, present.
Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, present.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, present. Thanks, everyone.
Alrighty. Thank you, everybody. With that, we are going to move forward with our agenda. It's always great when we can recognize and remind ourselves of why we're truly here. We're in the business of taking care of our students, and so it's always great when we can see the accomplishments of our kids, of our students, and recognize the great things that they are doing. So we're going to start off this meeting with-
You have to do the approval first.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. I'm trying, I'm, I'm excited for our kids, Dr. Aker. I apologize. I apologize, everybody. Leslie, these are the things you're going to have to keep me on track with. See, I tell you. So with that, I will take, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Jamie Humphries?
Jamie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page? Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you.
And we need our board norms, too, Randy.
Oh, he did. He got the norms.
Oh, sorry. Never mind. I'm excited.
You, you want me to read them again? I'll read them again.
No, I'm okay. I'm normal. Too much help.
Thank you. Everything I said about our students still is true. So let's go ahead and start off with the awards and recognition of our students of the month.
Good evening, Board, President Lopez, Vice President Bradley Page, Dr. Faust, fellow members of the board, and Dr. Miguel, in your first meeting. Some of you guys are going to look at us and say, wait a second, we haven't been in school. How do we have students of the month? But we have some students that we're indebted to from the month of March. So they earned this award over February, and then all of a sudden, we hit spring break and COVID hit, and next thing you know, we were never able to honor these, our students from our district. So, as President Lopez said, we want to get this rolling again. We want to get a positive spirit, and we definitely want our students to be honored. So, this is going to be a look a little different, as board members will be reading specific descriptions of the students and what they've done, as opposed to the teacher, just because of our, you know, virtual space that we're in. But we're still excited about this. So, our first student we'd like to present is from the pre-K KCK ECC, and it is Ava Yang. And the floor is open to whichever member of our board will be-
And you know what, Stephen? I don't think they have access to that. Can you read those?
I will be happy to.
You're awesome.
Thank you, Stephen.
Well, actually, give me a second. What I have are the pictures. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open the picture and I'm going to share it. These don't look as nice as we might like, just because they're smaller. But this is young Ava. She's our student of the month from KCK ECC, and we're extremely excited about her representing our district from the Early Childhood Center. Every time I see ECC, I almost want to say early college, so I did get that correct. The second student that we'd like to recognize is from Emmy Pearson School, and it is Michelle Moore. And I apologize, I am not the king of Zoom. I do improve every meeting, but we will ensure that our young people are honored. Our third recipient is from Gloria Willis Middle School, and it is Jayla Moya. And please also remember, with summer and with some of the other things going on, it was very difficult to get ahold of every teacher, and some of our teachers were also no longer in the district. And last but not least, representing JC Harmon, and that's our high school student of the month, will be Germán Pastran. There's Germán. So, board members, thank you for this opportunity to present our students. Out to our, our teachers and our staff and our principals. September 8th, we start school. Please get some students nominated, get those in. At the next one, we will be reading off, and we'll get the two teachers involved, because they'll be actively engaged with kids again, and we're looking forward to this. Board, thank you for the opportunity to share the honors of our students.
Thank you so much, Mr. Linkus, for putting that together and for sharing the accomplishments of our students. We are so proud of our students and all their successes, and as we enter into this new school year, we wish all of you the best of luck, and we are here to support you, to make sure that you continue your success. So, I was told by, by someone that the parents of Germán, or Alex, as he's known, are Spanish speakers, so I'll just give a quick shout out. I was asked if I could give a few words. So, para los padres de Germán, o Alex, como lo conocen, felicidades por el éxito de su estudiante, y estamos muy orgullosos de él por todo el trabajo que ha hecho en la escuela y en nuestra comunidad. Entonces, felicidades a sus padres, a Germán, por todo lo que ha hecho, y le dejamos éxito en sus estudios. So, thank you very much, everybody, for, for supporting our students. Again, they are the highlight and the reason that we gather here at our board meetings, and the reason that you all do the amazing work that you do every single day. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Linkus, and looking forward to continuing to support our students at next month's meeting. So, thank you. We will continue on with our board meeting, and now we have, we come to the section of our budget hearing and approval. Every year, we have to have a public hearing and approval of our budget, the budget that we've worked through. So diligently, thank you to Mr. Covington and your staff for putting together and the hours that you've put into showing us the budget and going through, walking through the budget with us. So, we appreciate all that work. And Board, thank you for your diligence, as you've asked plenty of questions, and have been very thoughtful in this, in this budget that's been presented to us. So, at this time, I would open, I would ask that the Kansas City Board of Education, open the public hearing for the 2020-2021 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do a roll call, please.
Randy, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Jamie Humphries?
Jamie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Bradley Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you, and everyone. So now, I would ask if there was any public comment for the budget that was submitted? Okay, a moment. Since hearing no public comment, and that no public comment was submitted prior to this, I would ask that the Kansas City Board of Education close the public hearing for the 2020-2021 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Jamie Humphries?
Jamie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page? Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. So now, we are at the approval of the 2020-2021 budget. Dr. Faust, anything you need to say here?
I recommend that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 budget as submitted. Actually, I think that should be the 2021 budget as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director for Business Operation, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Mr. President, Vice President, we have Tracy Kaiser with us this evening, and she will be handling this line item.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Faust, the budget hasn't changed. We presented it to you for a couple of weeks ago. So, if there are any questions, I would be glad to answer that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Covington and Ms. Kaiser. Any questions for either Dennis or Tracy? Hearing none?
I move we approve the 2020-2021 budget.
Second.
Seconded. Would you please do a roll call for us, Bridget?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Jamie Humphries?
Jamie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page? Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, no.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Now that that has been approved, I will just take a quick minute to say, as a board, the budget is one of our most important duties, and so I just want to say that I truly appreciate all the board members' thoughtful questions, the hours that you've spent in going through and coming through the budget to make sure that it was something appropriate for our district. And I want to thank our staff for putting that together as well. This is one of our key responsibilities as a board, and so I appreciate all of the questions that you all ask at every meeting around the budget, because we want to make sure that we feel good about it, and that it's the right thing for our district and our students. So, thank you, board members, for your diligence and thoughtfulness on this. And as always, it continues, right? So we'll be, I'm sure it'll be budget season again sooner than we think. So, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the community comment section of our meeting. Bridget?
Got it. And the first comment is from Anderson Jones regarding fall sports. Hello, my name is Anderson Jones, also known as AJ. I will be a senior this year at Washington High School, and I really need you guys to reconsider our football season and the rest of the fall sports. I have a cousin named Tenille Childers, who attends Summer Academy, and she plays volleyball. We are both seeking scholarships for these sports, and we need to play. I really need you guys to fix this. We honestly feel like you guys never listen to us, and whatever we say doesn't even matter. But if this isn't true, please change this and let us have our season. This can't be the first step to saying, hey, maybe USD 500 does care about our students and want them to succeed. Honestly, I need this season and countless others. Washington has been following all your guidelines in place during this pandemic. We did all this work for you guys to say we can't have a season, but y'all expect us to be encouraged and stay in school. Why should we do what y'all want if you guys don't do what we want? It's already bad enough that we can't start school in the classroom, so please don't suspend our season. Please give me and the other students around the districts to have our last chance of playing high school football. I want to go to college for this and potentially go to the league, so I'm begging you to let us play. And our second comment is from Hattie Smith, also regarding fall sports. Understanding we are in a pandemic with so many unanswered questions, I would just ask the constituents of the KCKPS USD 500 education system to be a part of decision affecting, decisions affecting our students and our families. Number one, on August 13th, the Wyandotte County Health Department's weekly report supported no fall sports, but it supported continued conditioning, drills, and exercising within the guidelines being enforced by COVID orders. Number two, I believe the KCKPS Board of Education had a premature discussion on the condition of continuing sports this fall, and jumped the gun without key information in the discussion, information being, can it be done? Can there be a safe season of sports? Three, was the premature information presented as a topic to the board on how to handle fall sports in our schools, and just totally misrepresented as to what needed to happen, resulting in fall sports being suspended? Four, by a vote of five to two, in my opinion, a predetermined decision was made and presented to the public, which came off as somewhat cavalier and selfish. Five, why do I say that? Because within an entire community of student athletes were left deflated and crushed and scrambling to make decisions to whether to stay in the district. Six, it's more to this than making decisions like this. Because of the time we're living in now, we've got to offer solutions and build partnerships to help, to help us understand what's behind decisions being made. Seven, when the Wyandotte County order comes out a couple of days later, and they say no to games, but recommend the students go ahead and keep working out, keep doing drills, keep doing what they've been doing. Why? Because the numbers are going down. This way, if something changes, the students would be ready. A side note, they've been working out together since June with no positive reports of the virus. Number eight, now the state has said fall, fall sports in the spring, preparation is still key to be ready for any season. Nine, I'm not saying whether it's right to play or not. I am saying it's right to continue the preparation of playing. It's the right thing to do to restore a level of hope to our current environment in our community. Other school districts maintained a level of normalcy. Number 10, one thing I know is that at one point, we all have to become accountable for our own safety, so please allow the student athletes to get back to what they do. Allow them to get back into the physical aspect of preparing themselves to be the best athlete they can be. This is teaching them safety as well. 11, this way, KCKPS students who are talented and worthy won't miss out on opportunities in the form of scholarships. Thank you, Hattie L. Smith.
Thank you, Bridget, for reading those, and thank you to our committee members who submitted comment. We look forward to continuing the conversation with you all. So, thank you. So, we will move forward with our agenda and go to our board updates. And I believe the first one is from Mr. Covington, who will give us an update on our bond.
Good evening again, Board. We have Lee Dunn with us, I mean, Lee Moore with us from JE Dunn. He will provide us with the update on the bond projects.
Thanks, Dennis, and good evening, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Faust. I'm going to do my best to not screw the screen up this time. So, we'll start sharing here. So you should see the board docs webpage. Oh, no, share now. There we go. Okay.
We can see it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, I'm going to jump right into a budget update. So, we currently, through June of 2020, we've put in about $179 million for the work in place. And again, our anticipated work right now, based on that, we're around 97% complete with our projects through, through the end of June. So, the budget sheet you're working, you're looking at right here. So, the, the major change from last month, we are recognizing a little bit more savings in our GMPs as the projects are wrapping up. So, we're showing about three, just a little over $3 million for the savings to our projects. And then, as always, even though it's not oriented right there, we've got the detail just by project for your, for your viewing there. So, I'll jump into the project updates, and happy to say, well, sad to say, this may be the last report, at least for these projects, because all the projects I'm going to present tonight are complete, but except for one project. And wanted to show you guys just some of the finished products that we've got that we didn't have for you the last meeting. So, the first one is JC Harmon here, and you can see, that project was just basically the second floor corridor hallway. As you can see, the, those ceilings came out real nice, new lighting, definitely better lit than, than the previous, which was the goal. So, I'm happy to, to say that project is complete. Next project is West Park Elementary, and again, we were pretty well wrapped up with the project last month. We were still in the process of demoing William Out and White. You can see there on the right side of the screen, the demolished William Out and White. It's, it's gone, poof, gone. And so, we're finishing that site work up there. And then you can just see some of the interior pictures. Again, beautiful school, looks great with all the furniture and desks and stuff, and, and will definitely look great with students in it. Next project is JF Kennedy Elementary. This was a secure entry project. So, this was just, this was a finished project of the entry desk there as part of that secure entry project. Next project is Francis Willard. Again, last board meeting, we were pretty much wrapped up on the inside, but we were still working on some site work. So you can see, we had a little bit of work to do in the rain guard tension basin there, and then there's actually this sales system in the courtyard there for some outdoor learning and use for the students. Have some shade out there. Next project, Lowell Bruni Elementary. Again, same story, the, the interior was pretty well wrapped up at the last board meeting, but we have been putting the finishing touches, finishing touches on that in the site. And you'll see there, the welcome sign, and then some pictures of the interior. Again, some of the really neat space that's available. Next project, Carby Bruce. So this is the one job that we still have a little bit under construction, and really, it's deconstruction northwest. So you can see there on the right-hand, top of the right-hand page there, the demolition of the existing northwest. So, that's been going on for a few weeks now. And then, again, some, some pictures of the inside, the building there with the gym and commons area, and some corridor and classroom there. But on the left-hand side, you can see, we, we have put the finishing touches on the site work during the month of late July and early August there. So you can see, the courtyards are complete. Those look, those look really nice. And then, you can see your sign there, and we've got trees and grass and all that good stuff growing there. So, we'll be working on that demolition for at least probably another month to get that, once we get that building down, we'll dig out the footings, backfill dirt, and, and create, create that grass space up there. Next project is the Central Middle School. Again, we had a secure entry renovation, and then some maker space. And so, again, late July, we were able to put the finishing touches on that new entryway there with the steps and handrail and the sign. And then you can see some of the inside, the maker space has the furniture installed in it and all ready to go. Last but not least is our Argentine and Eisenhower Middle School renovations. And so you're, you're seeing some pictures here of Eisenhower, which was the, basically that project was just all the maker space and collaboration space. You can see some of the finished product, again, with the furniture in it, the maker's space tables and, and some furniture there. Turned out really nice. Next page here is Argentine. So, we had a secure entry project at Argentine. You'll see that on the right-hand side, and you can see some of the components of that with the hallway. And then we had a little bit of renovation in the existing administration area. So you're seeing some of the photos there of the teacher's lounge, conference room. Still working on getting, at least as the time this picture was taken, getting a little more furniture in there, and then the reception desk. And then the last picture is Argentine, the, the media center and maker space that we worked on. So you can see, again, there, furniture inside, maker space tables, and, and that space came out looking great as well. So, that is the conclusion of my progress update, and if, if anyone has any questions.
Yes, this is Wanda Bradley Page. In the original plan for Northwest, were they going to put a track? They had the track out front. Would they, I don't know if that was in their plan to put the track back, or will there be a track?
I can speak on what the current plan is, which there is no plan to put a track in there. I'm not sure I can answer the question of what, what the conversation was about that during the planning of that.
Yeah, that's correct. This is Doug Clemens, Director of Physical Properties. Good evening, everybody. Lee's correct. During the planning phases, there was not a plan to put back a track. That entire area where the existing Northwest Middle School is, will become kind of an open green space, park-type area for the neighborhood.
And even the space that they tore down, that's going to be a green space, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because someone had told me they were going to build a track, but I wasn't sure. And that's why, when I saw you were going to do your presentation, I was just wondering if that was true or not. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you know when are we going to be able to tour those sites? As a board, we normally tour them when they're open. Do we have a plan for that?
I'll, I'll, I'll take that one as well. And I know Mr. Covington and Lee might want to jump in, but I'd be very proud to arrange that with Lee. I think he'll be very happy with all those sites. So, I think we'd be more than happy to get that arranged sometime.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions for Mr. Moore, or for Doug, or Mr. Covington? Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for the update, and again, for the team, for all the great work. Beautiful buildings, and I can't wait to tour. We're really excited to, when we can, get students back in there, and staff. So, we're really excited. So we're really excited for the work and appreciate J.E. Dunn and the work you all have done. And again, our own staff for, for the planning and for putting everything together, make sure that this has gone smoothly. So just wanna say kudos to you all for your teamwork and getting it done.
It's, uh, it's been a great project and honor to work with everybody on the team and, and you're welcome, we, we've appreciated the partnership.
Absolutely, first-class facilities for our students and that's, that's what they deserve, so thank you. All right, so with that, we will continue on and move on to our strategic planning update for Mr. Linkus.
Recommend that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as informational item, an update on the strategic planning process for the 2021 school year submitted by Stephen Linkus, Chief of Staff, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening Board, President Lopez, Madam Vice President. Let me go ahead and share my screen and we'll get this going. So we've worked in partnership with Greenway Strategy Group, as you remember, they have presented to you guys back during the fall. We've had continuous work going on. So as we look at what we've been up to, the first phase was July through September. And if you guys remember, we had Greenway come out, they did a presentation to the Board and talked about our progress at that time. During Phase Two, we were able to get back out in front of you guys, Dr. Faust, brought to you our priority student outcomes and strategic themes. Your input was taken and those were used on the draft strategic framework that you guys received Friday. And now we're in Phase Three, so we're actually starting the work, we're moving into the action planning and we're getting the initiative started. So as we look at the components, when you look at the direction, those are the different terms that we did during Phase One and Phase Two. So that's a lot of the work that we had, we've had over probably 70 members from our district, employees and central office staff work on this. And now we moved into the methods. We have teams at the moment working on action plans, they're getting the details together and they're putting them into the initiatives. Those plans will be going out in front of the cabinet, which will then of course come back to you, the school board, so you can see them. When we looked at what we got going with our strategy teams, we had four strategy teams. There was one for each strategic theme and each one had an area of focus. These teams then would keep the cabinet abreast of what was going on, they would come present every few weeks, let them know what was happening, let them know what the specific topics that were going on in the group, and receive feedback for anything that needed to be changed. Cabinet is also, we've used the phased initiatives, as you look at Phase One, those are the initiatives that are gonna be launched this school year. So we did them in three years, Phase Two will be the 21-22 school year and Phase Three will be the 22-23 school. We knew there were a number of phases and a number of initiatives that we wanted to go forward with, there were too many for one year. So the easiest thing was to work on them over three and then look to have them complete over a five-year period. These are some of the team members that worked on this plan. So if you look at that picture or the pictures that we have posted, these are the ladies and gentlemen that put in great work for our district. So you see school-based personnel, you see central office personnel, human resources, classified, certified. We had a little bit of everyone that was involved. These individuals were given up one to two hours a week to work on this as part of their jobs. And also during the summer, some of them worked and they were compensated. But they were making sure that this plan could become, come to fruition, so that we have something that we can use to help guide our movement as we look to the next three to five years within our district. Here you have the draft strategic plan framework. So remember Phase One and Two were the outcomes, the priority student outcomes, your strategic themes. Those were approved and Dr. Faust brought those up in February. And now we started to work with the strategic initiatives. So as you look at the strategic initiatives, a lot of work went into these. We had to look at what could be done within this school year. We also had to look at COVID, COVID has thrown a curve ball to a lot of the things we were bringing forward. So when looking at that, we had to look at what realistically could be done by our schools and our support staff, and also those of us from central office would be helping them. But then we also had to look at what monetarily could we get done? What was gonna fit between the budget constraints that we had coming, coming forward this year? So one of the things we did is we met with cabinet, we discussed these things and we did ensure that everything fit between the budgets you guys just approved. As we look at these initiatives, you see we have eight, eight of them. You have the executive sponsors, you have the initiative owners, and then you also have our Greenway coaches, Patty and Yanika, they're also on the call with us. They'll be happy to answer questions with me when this presentation's over. And these are the teams that have done the work. We have roughly 70 to 80 people, as I stated earlier, that have been through this process that have helped out. And then lastly, as we look at this, each phase initiative, they have an action planning team, they're currently designing blueprints. The blueprint will be the detailed document on how we're actually gonna make these things go into effect and how we're gonna show that we're reaching our goals. The other thing to remember is the blueprints will have everything that is posted on there. And once we put these into action, the Board is gonna be getting updates every so often. So we're looking at our first update being late fall and early winter. COVID has kinda pushed some things back, so they would have been sooner, but implementation will start this school year. So we're looking forward to putting all these in motion, helping the district start its next three, three to five-year trek and doing that with the support of the Board. So at this point, if you have any questions, or excuse me, I have one more slide, cabinet's gonna have to review the, review these. The senior leadership is gonna engage in this as well, they're gonna discuss the metrics. The school board will be part of that, so we'll be coming back to you to say what are we using to measure our progress? And once again, we'll be very happy to have our teams come back late fall, early winter and come back and see you every few weeks and discuss where we're going with this, so that we can show that, as we like to say, KC KPS is on track. So at this time, unlike my, my previous air, we will open it up to any members of the Board who may have questions. Myself or Yanika or Patty, they are on here, they can say hello and we'll be happy to support or answer any questions we have. And if you don't have, we don't have the answer, we'll be happy to get it for you and bring it back quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Linkus. So before I open up for questions, I just wanna appreciate, say thank you to you and your team for putting this together and working hard on this and to all staff and community members as well, cause I know community was also involved in an earlier part of the, or completing strategic plan. I do have a, a question to start off with regarding, I saw Dr. Thompson's name on there and one of the, one of the slides, but thinking about equity and inclusion, welcoming and belonging and, and everything and what that, what that means. Is there a way to call out specifically the work that we're doing around equity and inclusion? I know we see that social emotional support in there as well, which I think is super important. But as we continue to move forward, I know for the Board, equity and inclusion and training and that sort of thing has been something important that we've talked about. Is there a way to make sure that that's embedded in the culture of our strategic planning and district moving forward? Maybe nothing to answer exactly right now, but just to think about how that's intertwined in all of the strategic plan moving forward.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that, President Lopez. And one of the other things to look at with the equity inclusion, one of our initiatives in the, one of our initiatives specifically goes after recruiting a diverse workforce. So just from the employee perspective, that's one start. And then we will also intertwine it and embed it in the academic components, just as you mentioned, so thank you for that suggestion.
Mr. Linkus, this is Janie Humphreys, can we get copies of those slides?
Yes ma'am, they were sent on Friday, so they should be in the Board Library. And I am happy to send them again if, if we need to do so.
They're in the library or the attachment in the agenda? Cause the one that I saw is not the same one that I printed that, that you just showed us, the one I printed out is different.
So Bridgette, were they? So they were uploaded to the library, I can definitely get you these again, that is not a problem.
Okay. I can upload them into the library, you'll just send them to me. I did put them on the agenda, are they not showing on the agenda?
Yeah, they're on the agenda.
On the agenda, okay, I must have printed out the other ones then. So, okay.
This is Maxine Drew, I'd just like to say, as well as Mr. Lopez, to say thank you because it's a lot to be able to consider the different learning styles of all the students within our school district and considering what we're dealing with, I heard you mention that there were about 70 to 80 people who had met to be able to implement this plan. And I just wanted to personally say thank you because I know that when I was Board President, that this was being presented and it's a lot of work to do and obviously it took them some time, but we're continually moving forward again, thank you.
I wanna say thank you as well for all the work that's gone into it. I know our parents are so excited about getting back to school and seeing their teachers. And I know I've seen many posts with teachers ready to get back with students. So thank you for posting it and giving us a logical plan that's just very clear and detailed. So I appreciate it and I did get a chance to read through the documents, so I'd say it's very thorough.
Any other questions or thoughts for Mr. Linkus?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the remote learning. Is it?
Oh, you're, you're jumping ahead, we're not quite there, Dr. Yeager.
Okay.
Hold that for five minutes, please, thank you. If there are no other questions for Mr. Linkus, thank you for the presentation. Again, I would just say that this is a living document, right? I think oftentimes we've seen when strategic plans are just, are put together and put on a shelf somewhere and for the next five years and then we redo it again. So that, I hope that's not the case for us, I think as a Board, we need to make sure that we know what is in there and hold ourselves and our staff accountable to make sure that we are implementing what's in there as well. This, and, and be flexible to know that, hey, things are gonna shift and change. So this is something that, that will constantly be a top of mind and we'll continue to work on. But that's, that's on us and to make sure that we're, that we revisit that strategic plan and, and are implementing that as, as proposed. So thank you everybody for that, that conversation. So thank you, Mr. Linkus. So we'll continue moving forward with our agenda and I think we have Matthew Anderson, Dr. Faust.
I said the Kansas City Board of Education accept as a first read, the framework of guiding principles for boundary. Yes, okay, just wanna make sure I had the right one, sorry, I heard Matty, okay, sorry. I recommend that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as a first read, the framework of guiding principles and boundary criteria as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, Lenora Miller, Executive Director of Operations and recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Evening again, Board, we have Lenora, is gonna walk us through this with the help of our RSP consultants, who are demographers on some suggestions and proposals for the 21-22 boundaries. They finished the New Chelsea Boundary this summer. So remember, we agreed to go ahead and look at the entire district for the 21-22 school year. So Lenora, I would turn it over to you.
Thank you Dennis, good evening Board, Dr. Faust. RSP and Associates will be sharing tonight a first read for the framework of the guiding principles and the boundary criteria. So if you will welcome Stacia and Rob Schwartz to the presentation.
Good evening, Rob Schwartz here. What a great night to talk about what life will be like when kids are back in school. Hearing that presentation of these new spaces, seeing your strategic plan, we do have some exciting days moving forward. So we're gonna jump into what is this framework gonna look like? And again, this is a first read, so what we've built into this presentation will be questions on the second read. We want you to see this first time, because when we come back for the second read, we're gonna want your guidance on what that framework will be. And I think we gave you a homework assignment where we had sent out the boundary criteria and example for guiding principles. So we'll, we'll talk about those specific components. So again, we wanna make sure that you're in tune with the boundary process, this ACE concept that's built into how we're gonna go about looking at the changes that need to take place with the boundaries, the guiding principles and boundary criteria, and then we'll talk about next steps. Really the point of this is we wanna be transparent, we want any of the community members to see this. But we're trying to make an acceptable plan that they're going to embrace and trust that you as administration and you as the Board are gonna carry out in a fashionable way. The next couple of slides are really for people who have not heard of RSP and the work that we've been doing in your school district. So this just gives them some context of our credentials and what work we do specifically in the state of Kansas. As I mentioned, in the second read, we're gonna use poll everywhere, if we're not able to meet in person, if it's like this, a way to, to gauge what your responses are, what you think about certain things that you're gonna see in this presentation. But we'll talk about that on the second read. So let's start with the process. So when we sat down with administration, we knew that we had to have a whole group of different people involved in making this successful. So when you look here on the left side of this page, you see many different colors. The blue is the Board of Education, the yellow is RSP with the work that we do, whether it's enrollment analysis or the facilitation of this process. The green is the Boundary Committee and the orange is public forums or public inputs, maybe web surveys, a whole bunch of different things that we put into this. Basically, it's sandwiched by the Board, so this first read of what we're talking about with the process, ACE, guiding principles, boundary criteria, you're gonna set the stage for that, you get to determine what that playground looks like. So here we are on August 25th. The first committee meeting is planned to, to start September 2nd, work all the way through December. And with what we come up with on, again, things that you will better understand when we get to the guiding principles and boundary criteria, we'll take that body of work out to the public for their inputs. Are there things that they may be able to tell us that will better make that plan more implementable? Then when we come back from those meetings, which are scheduled, I believe on the 8th and 9th of December, we'll come back to the committee in a January meeting, make sure that everything's kind of in line with what you, the Board, were wanting to ultimately see for this process. And once we have a recommendation from the committee, it'll come out to the Board. I'm hearing this, I believe it looks like January 26th meeting. And we'll set things in motion for the 21-22 school year. So that's the process, there's two school board meetings, there's six boundary team meetings, two public forums. And we actually will have another board meeting, cause we're gonna have a second read of, of what I'm presenting to you tonight. Again, here's the question I'll ask, hey, do you support the process, the timeline, the structure, the involvement, et cetera? Well then, talk a little bit about what those roles are, so those colors all meant something, right? Who did what? So we'll talk about what your role is as the Board of Education with setting this framework, the values, the priorities and whatnot. We absolutely have to have administration involved in this, they're the pink. They're gonna help set the context of some of the things that may relate to, let's say, transportation, some of the historical elements, where programming is. So very valuable in making sure that we stay in line with what those contexts are. The yellow is us, RSP is we're facilitating through this process, working through the data sets to help everyone understand what the outcomes are. The Boundary Committee, they're reviewing these scenarios, these options, you're based on these guiding principles, based on the boundary criteria and in working toward a viable solution that will come as a recommendation to you as the Board. Orange is the most important, it may be on the bottom, we purposely have done that because we think that's the foundation. If the community doesn't accept what we're trying to do, it's not gonna be a very good plan, right? So again, all of this has to come into play for this to be a good process. When we get to the end, that people are gonna embrace what these changes mean. So that's the process. And again, we'll ask this question, do you understand these roles? Does it all make sense, right? So it's either yes, no. We then are gonna talk a little bit about ACE. So this is a concept that RSP has developed over the last 18 years that, hey, we have these guiding principles, we have these boundary criteria, but gosh, we've noticed there are certain things that when we go through these processes that we have to be in tune with. And sometimes it's you, the Board, that understands these things, sometimes it's the committee members or the public. But let me explain these three pillars. So academics, it kinda drives a lot of what happens in buildings. There's traditions with some buildings that certain programs are in those buildings. It could be special education, it could be under gifted programs, STEM programs, could be even the spaces that- Could be even the spaces that those academics take place. That has relevance in how we try to make some of the decisions in boundaries. We have culture. So what happens with who's got the better football team or basketball team? Those have an impact on how people view their experience in each of these buildings. And so you can see some different examples that we've listed out there with parent involvement, traditions and pride. Then we have economics. There are certain things that we can do with the amount of money that's available for the school district to utilize. So does that get into things that limits how we do repurposing or additions, bond referendums, construction, those type of elements? The combination of these three pillars allows us to understand, how do we move through this? How far can we push a change and how will that be accepted by the community itself? Again, we'll ask the question, hey, do you support what ACE means? Then, as we move to guiding principles, what we set the stage here in your homework was really to see with the conversations, the analysis that we've done, some general things that we thought were a starting point in making sure that we provide the right framework for the committee to work with. And I'll give some examples as we work through here, how some of this could change what the committee looks at. So we've listed off, I think, about eight bullet points. So let me move. Sometimes Zoom does some weird things. Move my little box here. So I'm going to read each of these bullet points because I want to make sure everybody understands. And what I'll do on this page, which is not typical of how we have presented to you, but I'll ask for questions specifically to these guiding principles. And if there are, you as board members, just let's let's talk this out. Because I want to make sure that we have good wording, we have things that are understandable, maybe things you may think need to be added to this. And that way, when we come back for the second read, we're all good with this. So the first one, we have the board will consider this boundary work as part of the district-wide long-range planning. So we're going to take into account all the things you're doing with your buildings, your programming, to make sure this works. The second bullet point, the future boundary should provide even better educational opportunities at each school to ensure an equitable student experience at each school. That can be a little bit difficult when we have different programs at some of these buildings and the number of kids that are there. But again, we want to provide that type of experience at each and every school. The third bullet point, neighborhoods are influential in how attendance areas are created and accepted by the community. So it's a foundational block of how we interact in our communities, right? And so we were saying that's that's influential in how people will see these boundaries. The next bullet point, future boundaries can anticipate future change in the neighborhood. We worded it that way because we have this regraining that's happening in some of your neighborhoods, meaning there's more kids than there were in years past. Or there's fewer kids or graying of those neighborhoods. And so we know there's some changes. And so we may make a building fuller than what we maybe would ideally want because we know it's an area that's that's becoming fewer kids. Or we may keep it a little more open because we know there's more younger families moving in there. The focus, the next bullet point, the focus of the boundary process is at all grade levels. So we're going to be focusing on elementary, middle and high school. But I do want to build on that we're not going to make any change of areas that we moved out of New Chelsea. We're not going to move them again. And we mentioned that at that last meeting that we talked about this is that those changes were not going to be temporary. They're like, yes, you're moved in. We're not going to move you again. The next bullet point, the boundary proposed should continue to effectively utilize all of the available district resources. So what we're trying to say there is we're not going to make one building, let's say, at 50% utilization and another at 100%. That wouldn't be fair to the experience of either the teachers and definitely the students and the parents. Next bullet point, the boundary lines that fall will follow natural manmade boundaries are desired in how attendance areas are created. Basically, we want to create something that makes sense. When you look at this on a map, is it going to look like we were kind of gerrymandering things? Or is it going to make sense with how we can put things together, whether it's transportation, walkability and whatnot? The last bullet points, grandfathering, transfers, student options will be an administration recommendation to the board according to your board policy. And we made that for sure. We didn't want the committee to be worried about what that would look like. We didn't want it to be that you, the board, are concerned when we start to make these changes. Everybody will likely want to see the building they currently are at just because they like that building, they know that building, there's there's some human experience in those facilities. So we're saying if there is going to be something, and there may be opportunities where this could occur, and I'll give you an example. So if we have a change in a boundary, maybe we can keep the current fourth graders. They can stay at the same building, but everyone else would have to go where the boundary change now is saying that we need to go in the following school year. So that would be an example of what that might look like. So those were the general framework of things that we thought were definitely guiding principles that would be applicable for the committee to understand. So here again, I want to give you an opportunity. Is there any comments that board members have with these principles? Things that you're like, gosh, I don't like how that's worded. I want something to maybe be more detailed in a particular way. Would love to hear what your your thoughts are since you did get this as homework and this is maybe your second time seeing this.
Thank you. Any thoughts from board members?
This is Maxine Drew. I think you've outlined everything explicitly in a way that will make us to consider what we will need to do and the direction that we will move in. And I'm well satisfied with that.
Outstanding, outstanding. So and again, you can always comment later. So again, the next question we'd have is, hey, do you agree with the proposed and discussed boundary guiding principles? We then will move into the boundary criteria. So there's 10 criteria that we're able to benchmark with some sort of data sets to know how we're able to evaluate each of the options that the committee will give us. And so we'll talk about each of these. They're alphabetical. There's contiguous attendance areas, demographic considerations, duration of boundaries, feeder system considerations, fiscal consideration capital, physical consideration operational, neighborhoods intact, projected enrollment, building utilization, students impacted by a boundary change, and transportation considerations. So we'll talk about the contiguous attendance areas. Kind of sounds like a disease, but really it's not. What we're looking at is, are things compact? So if it's contiguous, we gave us two examples of what is contiguous and then what's not contiguous. So contiguous, if you look, all of the colors are all compact. We're not creating any islands. And if we zoomed in, there may be some areas that maybe don't make as much sense as others. But basically, it's compact. When it's not contiguous, if you see where these arrows are, we're saying, look, we've created some islands. And so the goal of contiguous attendance areas is we have these compact attendance areas. Any questions about that? All right. And I'll be looking up on the screen for people's facial expressions. So the next one, demographic considerations. Actually, we have so many different variables that we can look at. We could look at ethnicity. We can look at housing types. We can look at values of houses, all host of things. The goal of demographic considerations could be that you want to have a equal type or similar type of student profile, whatever that variable is, in each of your buildings. So we're trying to balance what those demographics are. Typically, what we see in most districts while we're working on this, it really gets into the socioeconomic. And a lot of this, interesting enough, it's into whether or not a building will be title one. And sometimes we've had things where all of a sudden a building no longer is title one. And that creates just as much strife as going the other way because of the way the funding streams are for materials that that school can get. Again, demographic considerations, we take into accounts of some sort of balancing that we do with that criteria. Duration of boundaries. As a parent, I love this one. I want to say no boundary changes ever. So whatever we're doing with a boundary change, we try to make it last as long as possible. And that's why I started out with part of the conversation of we have areas that are regraining, other areas that are graying, taking into account what's happening with the enrollment analysis will have an impact on how long these boundaries last. So the goal is that they can last as long as forever. Feeder system considerations. All right. So this gets into how your elementary feeds into your middle school and then on into your high school. So we have what we call a complete feeder and then an incomplete feeder. So a complete feeder is literally a elementary feeds completely. All of those kids move into the same middle school and then they'll move on into the same high school. That would be a complete feeder all the way through the system. An incomplete feeder would be that an elementary might be split between two middle schools. Or the middle school might be split between two high schools. Sometimes we'll have a complete and incomplete feeder from the standpoint of they may incompletely feed from elementary to middle school. But we have a complete feeder from middle school to high school. So sometimes as we get into where kids are, the capacity of the buildings, that can have an impact on how able we are to have a complete feeder. The goal with this criteria, have a complete feeder. Makes it a little bit easier for the parents to know, teachers, counseling, all of those wonderful things that make the system work. That's feeder system. Fiscal consideration capital, this would be, we're not going to create a plan that's going to create more expense for building projects. Could be renovations, modulators, additions, new buildings, whatever that would be. We're not going to create a plan that adds to that expense. Next criteria is fiscal consideration operational. Different than the buildings, this is how we staff the buildings, specifically certified staff. There may be things that happen with the way the number of kids play out that we end up having more staff than what we were budgeting for. So we would want to make sure that we're not creating a plan that you have to inherently hire more staff to make it work. Next criteria, neighborhoods intact. So what we gave on this illustration is the blue line represents a planning area or a neighborhood, the way we've classified it. And then my team put in this orange line and to the left of it, we've labeled it A. To the right of it, we've labeled it B. What we're saying is we're not going to break this planning area any smaller than the way we've classified it from the data that we've received from the UG or how we're looking at some of the legal descriptions to create these planning areas. So we're saying we're going to keep this entire planning area that's in the blue. It's going to go as being assigned to one elementary, one middle school and one high school. So the neighborhood's intact. All right, projected enrollment, building utilization. This is where we tie in what's projected for enrollments. And then how does that relate to the capacity of the building? Which is why we looked at New Chelsea and you had to make those new boundary changes. So the goal here is that we have a balanced, logical enrollment that works within the confines of the assigned school capacity. So the visual we gave here was, I believe, the actual projections we had for each of these buildings. Then students impacted by a boundary change. So in this criteria, we would be trying to minimize the number of students that are impacted by the change. So we just gave an example here at the high school level of if whatever change is made as an example with Schlegel, we have seven ninth graders, four 10th graders, six 11th graders and six 12th graders for 23 kids that would be impacted. And this is fictional. We just kind of put some numbers in here. But we know who's impacted. So we want to minimize the number of students that would be impacted for the goal of this. The last criteria, transportation considerations. This would be where, working with the KCK staff, we're trying to make sure that we don't create a situation where there's more buses, there's more time for pickup, drop off, that we try to minimize the car lines or we try to maximize bikers and walkers being able to get to these buildings. We're going to try to make it a safe situation, no matter what mode you're getting to these buildings, as a walker, a biker, a car or bus. So the next read will say, hey, do you agree with these proposed boundary criteria? A, yes. B, no. We'll then open up some conversation where we'll be able to start the framework for the committee to understand what the criteria mean to you as explained to you and as we discuss in reading two. This conversation will lead us to using this Poll Everywhere software. I'll move to this, where you'll select the top three criteria you think should have the most influence on your belief system in how the committee would evaluate the plans that we create with them. And once we get this outcome, we'll know what you all are thinking. And then I may ask you some questions with, well, do you understand this means this? Because some of these criteria are in direct opposition to each other. And I'll give you an example. So one that could potentially happen is if we want to have good transportation, we may find, depending on which variable we use for demographic considerations, we may create something that better balances the demographics. But the transportation disaster, right? That's just one example. So we're not going to let you go down a road where it creates something that comes back to you that it's a total mess. And that's not what the goal of this process is. We've been doing this for 18 years. So we know if you were to start thinking certain things, we can ask you some questions. Is this really what you think? Is this really what you want? But again, what we're trying to help the committee with is what your thoughts are on how this would be prioritized. And depending on how you come back with your feedback, we've done this where it's very rigid. Where it's like, we think neighborhoods intact is the number one thing and we want demographics. And then we want to make sure that we minimize students that are impacted by a boundary change. Done it that way. We've also done it where we just take the top three or four criteria. And we say, hey, this is what we're really going to try to target those top three or four and create a plan around that. So we'll just wait to see what your responses will be at the second read. And then we can see what your thoughts are, how we do that. We try to be flexible on this. And this is going to be your plan. So the last part of this is next steps. So what we don't have in here is we'll have a second read. So I think that might be September 8th, where we do the second read. We're fine. I already mentioned to you that September 2nd is the first committee meeting. We still have enough work that we can work on with the committee without having the guiding principles and boundary criteria prioritized to get them thinking about things we need them to be thinking about on this. So we're fine there. And then the other thing we wanted to highlight was the public input on December 8th and 9th. So with that, let me open up if there's any other questions, comments, board members have.
Thank you. Quick question on the public input. Will this information be in multiple languages for families who speak or read languages other than English?
I believe we can work with the district on the opportunity for this to be in multiple languages. I know with our Poll Everywhere, we have that ability. And that's what we did with that New Chelsea survey.
Great. Thank you. Other thoughts or questions from board members?
How will the public provide input?
Great, great question. So right now, with it being in December 8th and 9th, who knows where we are with all of this COVID? Hopefully, we're at a point where we can do things more in person. We'll work through that. It may be that it can be in some sort of hybrid setting. Maybe we have to do more of like what was done with New Chelsea, where we have that online survey. We could add in some videos, some different things that may make it a better interactive experience. So we'll just kind of wait to see what we are able to do. And if we can do things that are out in the buildings or with the PTOs, that may be a direction that we likely take.
Okay, because December 8th, I mean, September is the Okay, because December 8th, I mean, September is the, schools start September 8th. And then if we end up going back into, to school setting in November and December, people would just be starting to get back into the buildings. So, you know, we have no idea what's going to be going on then. It would take some planning between our, our principals and our teachers and our family advocates, advocates in our buildings to see what we could do. But I think public input's going to be very important. And like, like Randy said, multiple languages would be very helpful.
I agree.
And, and hopefully, we'll be able to have a little bit more personal contact by then in December to, to explain things and then to give them a chance to, to really have a good feedback from the public.
Thank you. Any other board members with thoughts or questions? Now's a good time. Okay. Karen Dunn, thank you for the presentation today.
Thank you, Rob.
Definitely something we want to continue to learn more about here. This will be an important decision as we move forward, on how we move forward with this. So thank you for the information, board members. I just asked that we continue to keep our eyes and ears open and keep being thoughtful about how we move forward with that. So thank you.
Do we have to accept the first read?
Yes, that sets it on the agenda.
I make a motion that we accept the first read of the comprehensive boundary plan process, process plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other thoughts or questions, discussion? Would you do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, we are on to the remote learning assurances document. I jumped ahead a little bit, so sorry about that, Matt. Dr. Faust?
Yes. Recommendation that the Kansas City Board of Education approves the Kansas City Kansas Public School Remote Learning 2020-2021 Assurance Document as submitted by Matthew Anderson, Interim Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, Dr. Faust, Dr. Miguel, board, that's a mouthful. I'm excited tonight to bring forward the KCKPS Remote Learning 2020-2021 Assurances. Just as a reminder, tonight, we won't be digging into anything besides remote learning because we have to provide the state with our assurances document. So tonight, what my goal is to do is to share with you what is remote learning and what it is not. And so what you see on your screen here is from the KSDE Navigating Change Document. This is Appendix L, and it's just a guide to remote, hybrid, and in-person teaching. So just to share a couple of things as we move forward here. What high, remote teaching is, is it is interactive, it's engaging, and it is the teacher. Our students will actually be taught by their teacher. It's not a canned curriculum like edgenuity or edement, edentum. Our students will be interacting with their local teacher here in KCKPS. I'm not going to read through this whole thing, just highlight some of the big ones. Our students in KCKPS, like I said, are going to have time to interact with their teacher using a video conferencing platform, and they will have multiple opportunities throughout the day to do that, unlike what we were doing in the spring, which was very much a self-guided with very limited contact with teachers. So we've increased the amount of time through this remote learning plan. As I mentioned, daily contact between the classroom teacher, it is not worksheets or packets. Last year or during the spring, we had the opportunity to share packets with our families and that was considered enough by the state. We cannot do that. Parents cannot opt out of remote learning. They have to participate in it, so we can't just send a packet and say, you're good. I spoke with someone at KSDE and they said if we did something like that, we would not be funded for that student. So all students will have to engage in remote learning. Finally, it's not specifically asynchronous learning, meaning kids are just kind of doing it on their own. There will be synchronous opportunities, which means there's a live in-person session at a set time for kids to engage. And there will also be asynchronous opportunities. Our kids aren't going to be on the computer for 360 minutes every single day. That's way too much time to try to engage on a computer. So they will be engaged part-time with the teacher and then time that they'll have to engage on their own with some independent practice. So in your board docs, you have access to the assurance document as well as the 2020-2021 Remote Learning Plan. All of this information, that document right there, we can really find on page 12 through 19 of the Remote Learning Plan. It's a pretty hefty document, it's pretty comprehensive. What we wanted to do was make sure we had a strong plan in place to ensure that our kids are getting the best education through remote learning. So what are we required to do? So the state requires us to have a remote learning opportunity that approximates the students' learning experience that would be taking place in a brick and mortar classroom. So what does that mean? There are five things that we have to do as a, as a district as it relates to remote learning. So the first thing that we must do is we have to have curriculum and instruction for students. And so we will need to coincide that with each of the students onsite classroom to ensure that students can make a seamless transition back into the building when we do go back and that they're assessed on those same standards. So ensure, to ensure that we make that seamless transition from a remote learning to onsite learning. Schools have developed remote learning schedules for students that align very closely to what they would be doing onsite. For example, if a student is reading or in a reading class or an English class from 8:30 to 10:00, they would be, or that would be the time that students are engaged in that, in that reading time. So they would have synchronous opportunity for 20% to 50% of that time, so anywhere from 20 to 45 minutes, they're engaged with a teacher. And then the rest of the time is for them to engage in synchronous opportunities. All of those sessions will be recorded and they will be posted for students to access later, and it'll also be posted for students that may not be able to access it at that time. So every student has the ability to learn from that teacher. Assessed on the same standards and competencies, we are continuing to use our guaranteed viable curriculum to ensure consistency in learning across the district. Our curriculum and instruction team went through our guaranteed viable curriculum documents to make sure that we have alignment with the competencies and that the majority of our teaching is going to be on those priority standards identified by the state. We must have daily meaningful contact with our students. What does that mean? And then on the right-hand side, I apologize, these are where you can find it in the document. I'm not going to scroll through all the pages, but I wanted you to have that available. And I will share this PowerPoint with you after our, our meeting tonight. We must have at least one meaningful contact with a local teacher and then they must have access to all of their teachers. So how are we doing that? How are we making meaningful contact? When we make meaningful contact, it will be purposeful, it will be meaningful, and it will be of value. And we will address things such as the course content, their social, emotional wellbeing, their organizational skills, and any questions that may come up. We are asking teachers to hold office hours where they're available to every parent and student. It'll allow the parents to ask questions, share concerns, and to get support from the teacher. Teachers and staff will communicate through their family advocates early in the school year to establish time and a mode of communication that best meets their needs. We will also, in our document, it does specifically say that you are available to, or you will be responsive to your students' needs within 24 hours. So we've included that language specifically for that. Anytime we have a synchronous live session, the state says that that is meaningful daily connection because it gets students on the right track for the learning for the day. Meaningful contact can also include verbal or written responses, and it's not just simply saying, oh, the kid did their work. That's not meaningful. We need kids to have some kind of a written or verbal communication with them. One of the things we need to do is ensure that our building administrators are following up. So they are developing a process for communication to ensure that both contact is made to every student every day, either that's through the synchronous or being contacted. And that the number of phone calls is a reasonable amount. We don't want our parents to feel like we've got robo-calls, calling them constantly. And so what we're doing is figuring out who's going to be that main contact point for our families, and then those people can get really strong, build strong relationships with them. So students' academic progress. It must be monitored daily by local teachers to ensure that students are able to make a seamless transition upon return. So as mentioned, our students will submit work through our learning management system, Canvas. And as a reminder, Canvas is a FERPA compliant LMS, and we've double-checked that with KSDE as well as our attorney and MVP. So therefore, all of the student information will be kept private in that, that platform. Teachers will follow the Board of Education policy for grading, which is IHA. We want to make sure that we're providing a grade every week, and so we put that in this document to ensure that parents are up to date and students are up to date on what their progress is for a class. Along with grades, teachers are going to provide written feedback that allows them to understand what they need to do to continue to succeed if they are, or what they need to do to increase their, their academic progress. We're going to continue to use multiple forms of assessment, either informal or formal, to monitor the progress of our students. And we're going to utilize our instructional coaches to support our teachers with identifying ways in which they can do that remotely. And then finally, as part of the principal's responsibility, it is their responsibility to continue to monitor the teacher's grading practices to make sure that they're in compliance with the Board of Education policy. Attendance. Attendance has been a question that's come up a lot. After speaking with KSDE, we were able to clarify how we can take attendance as normal to bypass collecting such a large number of daily learning logs. Therefore, students who attend a synchronous, live, in-person video conference with a teacher is receiving their daily meaningful contact and therefore can be counted as present using our attendance system, Infinite Campus. Those students who are unable to attend those live in-person sessions and engage in asynchronous learning, for example, a video recorded and they're watching it and then later doing their own independent practice, they must have a daily learning log completed and a teacher or the teachers must contact those students to provide them with that daily meaningful contact. To guarantee that our students are attending school and that they are having meaningful contact with their teachers, building principals are currently working with all staff in their building. It'll take a village to complete this. So they're going to be working with their paras, their aides, their counselors, their social workers, our nurses, and we're going to work to ensure that if students aren't attending those live in-person sessions, we are making contact to make sure that they are engaged in the learning and that we can get them back on board for the live in-person sessions, because that will allow us to take attendance as normal. Finally, the fifth thing that we must do as a system is provide professional development to our teachers and educators as it relates to remote learning. Therefore, we have in our document listed out the different areas of professional development that are going to be provided by our district leaders, our school leaders, instructional coaches. This past, last week, we did our district professional development. We had a variety, a robust variety of topics that teachers engaged in. We talked about remote learning and the guaranteed viable curriculum. We did that for all contents and subjects. How do you use your curriculum resources? We purchased those new materials. We had sessions with our vendors to ensure that teachers understood how to use those in a remote learning setting. We had some social, emotional learning in a virtual setting for our folks. Special Education did a great job of providing professional development around how to take a deep dive into the remote learning plan and their regression plans. ESL did some work around boosting achievement for students who may have interrupted or minimal education, so they had a consultant come in and talk through that. Counselors, social workers, nurses, a lot of different departments had opportunities to work with their folks to be ready for remote learning. This week, buildings have the opportunity to do some things at their sites. We are doing our mandatory trainings for Title IX, bully harassment, all of those things. A lot of people did take time to do a deep dive into this document with their folks so they understood what their role and responsibilities were. Finally, Schlegel and Washington Cluster Schools are, are part of the trauma-informed schools work, and so Brittany Tally and her team are really digging into work with them on that project. Just to go back quickly, I apologize. One of the things that comes up is, so if we don't have Wednesdays, what is our plan for professional development? So ongoing professional development will occur at the building sites through professional learning communities, so their, their PLC time. Staff will continue to receive thorough and timely, relevant professional development that works for them, since we need to continue to provide them with those opportunities. As a reminder, district uses frontline professional development management system to verify that everybody is getting those. So all of these sessions that they did this week, they're actually in the system now. So what do we need moving forward? USD 500, the assurance document, needs to be returned to KSDE no later than September 1st to indicate-
Good.
That's the, sorry. Just to ensure that we are on track for remote learning. And so I just wanted you to all understand that this is due by September 1st. So at this point, I will take questions. If I can't answer your questions, I'm going to write them down and I will get back to you as soon as possible. So questions?
Hey, Matthew, this is Yolanda. Thank you for the presentation. I do have a question, and maybe it's just my mind. I'm catching up with the attendance policy. And so I think I understood you to say the daily interaction with the students and so on and so forth. I guess where my question is, if we have families that maybe they were, the, the student is able to work during the daytime on a Monday, so they're able to join the Zoom sessions on a Monday, but on a Tuesday, for whatever reason, the student can't join. What does that look like or does the attendance policy, is it confusing for our students or is it very clear?
So what they will need to do, and this will be talked about at Family Advocacy, is when they're in attendance, we can just take the attendance as normal. When they're not able to attend, let's say they couldn't make it to their first or second period, they'll still need to complete the daily learning log because that allows us to say that they've had their, their minutes. And so we can, we can take attendance on the days that they're there. In the days that they're not there, they'll have to work with their logs.
Okay, and that's for all age groups?
That's for all age groups, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Matt, thank you for clearly spelling things out. And so I think some of the parents who may have a lack of internet access may have a lot of concerns about how they could possibly do this documentation. I'm so excited that you have committed and your staff have communicated so that we can get and reach those parents who needed packets previously. So I just want to just get some reassurance on how that process may look. So if a parent says, hey, I don't have internet access, is, how do we envision that? Are we envisioning the teacher coming up with the strategy for them or the principal? If you can just kind of help work through how that scenario may look.
So our goal would be that if a parent can't fill out the log online, I'm just going to use this one as an example first, we'll have a paper log for them to complete and they'll just submit it back to the school. Our goal is that with the purchase of all of these new hot- Our goal is that with the purchase of all of these new hotspots is that we can engage more students than we were able to engage during the continuous learning plan because we know that students didn't have reliable internet. One of the things that our buildings are doing currently is they're reaching out to their families now to ask them, do you have reliable internet? If they do not, buildings are working on plans to help support them.
Matt, this is Janie. I have a question. For the high school students who have maybe five classes a day or however many, do they have to log in for each class and have attendance taken? Or is attendance just taken once a day?
So for our middle schools and high schools, the normal attendance is taken at each period. So what we're going to talk to our families about and our students about on Family Advocacy Day is the importance of attending each period. Because also, if you look back at the, that number one response or the number one assurance, it's that there's that seamless transition. And so we're going to keep our students like, please be there, please be there as much as they can.
So if they, they show up and log in for their first three classes, but they don't log in for this second set of three, they have to have a learning log that shows what they did for the second half of the day?
That is a great question. And the reason I say that is that's the question I asked KSDE. And I asked them last week, and I still have not heard a response. So once I do hear a response, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. No, we wanted to know the same. If they've done the majority of their classes, can it be counted as I made it for the majority of the time? I still haven't heard back from them. So once I do, I will let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All good questions so far.
Matt, this is Wanda Brownlee Page.
Yes.
And I have a couple of questions. The first one, I received a lot of questions from special ed teachers, and especially for those who are involved in the STEPS program, working with autism and other life skills. I saw what you said the state, the state is requiring. But is that realistic? And how are they working with them to help them help our kids?
So I'm actually, I just met with Dr. Charles today, and we had a feeling that question would come up. So I'm going to ask that Dr. Charles if she can jump in and kind of help shape that answer for you.
Good, good evening, everyone. So the answer to that question, you know, when you think about students with disabilities, students who have IEPs, you know, the regulations of the six hours, it's going to be appropriate for the vast majority of our students. But as you said, Ms. Page, there will be a small number of students that we will need to consider the time. We will need to consider the way that we're providing services. And so the good thing about this is that it's all based on the individual needs of students. So when you think about special education, think about the fact that it is based on what kids need. And so we will have kids where, you know, six and a half hours is not going to be appropriate for them to be on a, on a, you know, to have their instructional services. And so it's going to, there's going to have to be a lot of parent communication, amendments of IEPs to think through a temporary learning plan. And so we've already been training our teachers on that. So that work is already underway. So basically, it's like, you know, because we are in this season of remote learning, the IEP team along with the parents will consider just exactly what might a temporary learning plan look like during this time. Once we are back in a traditional setting, then the traditional IEP could be then put back in place. So there are things that KSDE and the Department of Education will allow us to be able to do. So that's one piece, the temporary learning plan. The other piece to that is we know that there are some students who can receive their occupational therapy, their physical therapy, their speech language services. They can receive those adequately online. There are other students who we know it would be beneficial for them to come into the school building. And so we will have to, we are in the process of working on a plan. Elizabeth Morris and I met about this. Greg and I have had multiple conversations about this. And when it's safe and the health department says that they accept our plan for bringing kids in, for bringing adults in, then we will be able to provide those specific services that students would not be able to receive in a remote learning service.
Will they all give you the flexibility? Because if you have a kid who can't use a computer, so they're going to work with you and allow you that flexibility to possibly bring them in to help meet their needs? Because that's one of their biggest concerns, that they didn't feel like we were really meeting their needs. And I'm just going by what he said, the state said. So I didn't know if they were giving you the flexibility so that we could really reach out and help them. Because I can only imagine if I was a parent and if my kid can't do this, then, you know, you don't want to set them up for failure. You want them to be successful too. So I didn't know if they were giving you the flexibility to bring them in and do what we need to do to try to help them.
So that is going to depend. So we will put the plan in, we will draft the plan. We're in the process of drafting the plan. And then from there, we'd have to take it to the health department because they have to, from my understanding, they would have to finalize and say if this would be okay for us to bring kids in.
Okay, because when I heard him present it, I didn't know if they had the flexibility for special ed to go beyond what, we know what we said. But these are certain cases, and each case is going to have to be individualized. So I didn't know if they were getting that.
Now, when you say they, who do you mean when you say they?
Okay, well, I got a letter from a teacher who worked with students in the STEPS program that has to deal with autism. And I also had another letter from someone who, several who taught life skills who were concerned. So I just didn't, we don't want to leave anybody out. And I don't, and I'm not saying that's what was said, but there's a concern. And just want to make sure that, you know, I know what the state said. But is the state giving you that flexibility? Or do we have it to assist these kids?
So what the state is saying is safety of students and staff first. That is what the state has been very clear on. That is what the U.S. Department of Education, Special Education arm of it has said as well, safety of kids and staff first. So that's why we are, you know, first thinking through the temporary learning plan because we know that there are students who will not be served well, right? On a computer for hours on end. And so it is coming together as an IEP team. It's certainly in collaboration with the parents as a part of that IEP team to be able to put a temporary learning plan in place. So that's the, that's the, I guess if we were going to use the flexibility, that would be it. And then in thinking, you know, I'm guessing it's going to depend on the cases and where we are. I'll ask Elizabeth to chime in. That will determine if we are then able to bring in small numbers of students to receive their services.
Thank you. And then my next question is on the technology. If the kids get the hotspots, and I know in other districts, my cousins work in Missouri, they're complaining about the hotspots not working. And I know they're saying no paper packages. So how do we help those who don't really have the technology? And what they get is not working. So what's the plan? What's the backup plan?
So currently, our backup plan is to ensure that people, that the families will call our TIS support desk. I know that they purchased a variety of models and to see if they can change out one, to see if we can get a different. And Rashid could jump in here and answer that too. We want to make sure that we think through some of the possibilities. You know, as Dr. Charles said, if there's a possibility of doing some work where we could open a couple of sites for families, and we don't need to, we can talk more about this at another time. But if there's a possibility at some point to bring in families at different places that need help, we can explore that opportunity so they can get connectivity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Page, I'll just jump in as well to reflect on that question around connectivity and access. I know we've got some staff and the Foundation for Excellence, they're looking into different grant opportunities that will help with the digital divide and access gap. So Crystal Watson, Stephen Linkus, Rashid, they're working to pursue different grants that would be able to purchase additional hotspots by different companies to help address some of those areas where hotspots may not work so great. So I know that's, that's still up in the air, but our staff are working through some of those things because that is a real concern. We do have areas where the hotspots don't work. You're absolutely right. And so we want to make sure that our, our families do have that access. So thanks, Matt, for, and for that information. For, I would just say, for any families and parents, you know, who are having trouble with access, make sure you let us know. Let your building know, your principal teachers, because that's going to be a huge issue. And if we, if we don't know that that's a need for you, then it's hard for us to address. But please reach out. And for our staff to continue to ask our students those questions to make sure that they have that access.
And I'll just jump in and say we are also looking at a couple of other options besides hotspots, but I'm not sure if we'll be able to get that in time, but that's something else we're working on.
And I know you said that we want them to call. Are we calling them to say, do you have your laptop? Is your laptop still working? Is there a problem? Do you need to bring it in? You know, I think it works on both ways, that we need to make that, you know, reach out and say, do you have everything? And is it working? And what can we do to help you make it work? Because we want to make sure come September the 8th, you have everything you need and everything's working.
You're absolutely correct, Ms. Page. Actually, that's what these next few days of next week, the family advocacy time. I know a lot of our buildings have already started reaching out to their families to check in, see how they're doing, give them a heads up on what's going on next week as it relates to those family advocacy days. A lot of them are just checking in, does your computer still work? And if it doesn't, we got to, we got to get that figured out because ultimately, our buildings and our principals really want our children to succeed. So they're making individual contact with families over the next few days and then into next week as well. So great, great thinking.
And we're also getting a lot of parents and kids bringing broken devices or missing charges to the tents outside of TIS. It was pretty busy on both tents all day. I think it's in the district FAQs of what they need to do also. So I know this multiple communications on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Matthew, while we have him here?
I'm here all night.
Well, hearing that again, thanks, Matt, and your team for putting that together. And again, it's, it's something that we're still working on. And Board, I would encourage you to think through and look at the presentation that Matt provided and the documents that are out there. And if you have other questions that come up after tonight, please reach out to Matt or send them to Ms. Page and I, and we can get them to the appropriate staff members. Because this is something we'll, we'll continue to have to work through. And questions are going to come up. And we have to be flexible and we have to be understanding as Board and staff and work with our community and students to make sure that they have the appropriate devices and access and support to be able to be successful while we're doing remote learning for at least the first nine weeks. So please make sure you keep thinking and ask questions as they come up.
I wanted to make a motion that we approve the Remote Learning 2020-2021 Assurances Document.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Bridgette, roll call, please.
Sure. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, you're on mute.
Thumbs up.
Okay. Rainey Lopez?
Rainey Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, let's continue on with our meeting and the agenda. Next, we will hear from our KCK Public Libraries and Ms. Levers.
I recommend that the Kansas City Board of Education accept that it's an informational item. The Kansas City, Kansas, Kansas Public School Library Director's report is submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Carol, you're on mute.
You, Dr. Yeager. Good evening again, Mr. President, Board, and Dr. Faust. Congratulations to Dr. Miguel and Matt Anderson as well. The July report for the public library is a little bit lengthy. However, I'm just going to give you some highlights and you can, on your own, just read through. And if there's any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Our online programming for the 17 weeks that we've been doing 24-hour live story times, we've had the 51,212 live story times shared to our community. 40,127 was in English and 11,085 were in Spanish. Okay, this is not moving. Okay. The interactive programs, the chart indicates how many programs we had and basically what the visual performances were. And then if you go further down, I'm just going to give you a little bit of snippet from each library. Maine reported that they had a very successful blog post. These are the highlights of the blogs on a variety of subject areas, including history, cooking, travel, fun, quizzes, meditation, et cetera. And in July, Maine created 38 new blog posts for a whopping 3,698 views. Best views at the Maine Library was "Know Your KCK History." Westside Manor has had more than 1,000 views. The Schlegel, we had some trail cameras posted that received a lot of attention. Patrons really like to see the animal activities at the lake. The weekly "What's New in Nature" that is posted on the blog as well as Facebook received a lot of views as well as shares. Patron seems to enjoy the nature series at the lake. One of our staff members at April Schlegel released an American Sign Language edition of her Mammals of Kansas City virtual program. It went over very well with the community and received thousands of likes as well as shares. South, they take home crafts. The community is really communicating with us and letting us know what works and what doesn't work. But our crafts have been so popular that some of the parents were asking us if there's any crafts that adults could do. And we decided to create a sloth pillow kit, which especially was well received. And over 525 people took part in that. And over 525 people took part in that. West, in July, they held their first virtual Dungeons and Dragons sessions. And everybody is just excited about that. There's another program operating through the West Wyandotte Library. It's called Connecting the Dots, and that's a monthly media newsletter covering relevant topics in today's changing world. And that's run by one of our librarians. August, we will be discussing racial equality and the B L M movement. Our commu-, our, our library wanted to do a community conversation on B L M, but because of the COVID, we have pushed that. And hopefully, in the near future, we could open that to the community. Okay. We've continued posting on Kansas City Kansas Public Library Programs WordPress.com. That's where you can find most of our programs. We had 11,410 views and 4,328 visitors during July, and that is our, our program site. And as you can look at the chart there, our crafts were the best in, we had 35 posts and 1,242 views. The second one was the Kansas City History with 1,013 views. And of course, what the adults are really enjoying is the recipes that the, the librarians are coming up with. Our other statistics, we've signed an additional 151 E card cards on July. And of course, the, the next chart will give you an idea. Whoopla is again on top, we had 6,537 checkouts. And XS360, we had 1,423. The total checkout outs for July was 9,450, just on the, those two. The next one is our board reports, and that's just a snapshot for you. How many searches people did? And so is the lifestyle, the databases. Again, News Bank, which is the plus Kansas City star image, we had 5,027 sessions in the month of July. Our social media, Facebook, we had 179,521. We've reached our Twitter, 59,995 in July. And then, of course, Instagram, 15,122. Our curbside pickup in July, we had a total checkout on our July curbside was 25,434 items. The total holes of July were 7,643. West, as you can see, checked out 11,469. And people placed 3,835 holes just for West alone. And then I'm just going to read a couple of, because we've asked our patrons for comments and we were inundated of positive comments. And I just wanted to share a couple with you. The, the most common one was, please extend the hours. So we're asking, with your permission, we would like to extend our hours to accommodate the working people because most people work until 5 o'clock and that's when, you know, we start. And we wanted to push it to 7 o'clock at night. But some of the comments were, I like XS360 much more than Whoopla. Just made and ate some of my dinner yum. That was in reference to a recipe that was posted. Someone said, I love how K C K P L has adapted to COVID and upped their online game and made curbsides so fun and accessible. Well done, well done, K C K P L. I will try to make this, it sounds delicious. Thank you for sharing. That's in reference to a recipe as well. Looks like fun. Get out of the house if you need to activity. And we had a story walk around all the libraries, if some of you have driven past. This was, again, what a great idea. That was in reference to the story walks at the library. Love having endless reading options available. Love that you all were working so hard to get us the books that we want and need to keep us sane during these difficult times. We appreciate all that you're doing. Also love that I need only wish for a book and my wish is granted by you wonderful people by placing a book on hold and you're getting it for us. Thanks for all you do for us. Another one is sharing, thanks for sharing this and all of your trail cam videos. I love watching the animals. Something I really wanted to show, we love the way you all have adapted to recent changes. Thanks for all you do. Librarians, they know my kid's name and my kids feel like they belong at the library. We also, we have also been so grateful for all the adaptations. There's somebody that said that I've been reading to a neighbor and that makes me want to read more. I love how much the library gives to our community and truly cares about its patrons. So with that, I'll hand it over to you if you have any questions.
I do have a question, wanted to know, are you talking about the extending the library time just for one location or all locations?
We, when we do it, we would love to do it for all locations and maybe just, maybe to 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock just so that we can accommodate the working, you know, people, at least when they come, you know, then at least they can pick up their stuff as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I have a question, this is Wanda Brownlee Page.
Yes.
What do we need to do to make that a reality? Do we need to make a motion now or what needs to happen if you want to extend the time?
You need to make a motion.
Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the time to the lib-, for the libraries to stay open to 7?
I second it.
Thank you, Ms. Page and Janie. They're moved and seconded. Any other discussion or questions?
Yeah, I just, I do have a question just because I can't remember the specifics. Are we open on Saturdays right now?
No, we just Monday through Fridays.
Okay, so we're talking Monday through Friday only?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And how will, Ms. Levers, how does this impact your potential budget for, with the change or the added hours potentially in staffing?
It, it won't affect the budget at all because we then schedule people, you know, coming in two hours later to stay two hours, you know, to 7 o'clock. I mean, we've used to do that nine hour, you know, from 9 to 9. So people start at 12 to do the eight hours, but it's, it's the same concept.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Bridgette, would you do a roll call vote?
Sure thing, Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
And Carol, you can stop seeing your screen.
What's that?
I said, Carol, you can stop seeing the screen.
Sorry. Apologize.
Thank you, Carol, for that information and especially the community comments. I think it's always nice to be able to, and for them to see that, hey, you actually do something with their comments and we do pay attention, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
So next we have the HR report. Carol, do you have? Or sat next on the agenda, sorry, pulling it up.
I make a motion that we approve the Kansas City Kansas Public Library Human Resource Report and Operations Recommendations.
Second.
Seconded, any questions? Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. On, now we go to the payment of bills for the public libraries.
I make a motion that we, that the library pays their bills.
I can.
Moved and seconded, Bridgette, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark? Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Levers, for your continued work and all of our public library staff, all you're doing for our community. Okay, now we will move on to our consent agenda.
Mr. Lopez, I would like to pull E as in exceptional from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the items on the kits consent agenda minus item E.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lopez, I, I, I have a question about B. Can we pull that, please?
We absolutely can. Okay, so we've got B and E, so any others? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve the items on consent agenda minus items B and E.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. If it's all right with everybody, we'll just go ahead and take up those items now. So we'll start with item B, Ms. Page.
Okay, my question is, I know she put it in the board library, the vacancies. Do we know if these positions have been filled and where are we? I know she put them, but I would assume by now some should have been filled or, or we still at the same numbers? Just some clarity, because I know on her report, that was something different. But I do know in the, the library, there were vacancies. So I didn't know, have we filled some of them or the number still the same? How are we?
Ms. Page, this is Kelly. You have a more recent, you have a recent vacancy report that shows you, I think, right now. Anyway, it has like, I think, around 40.
Okay, I didn't know if that was, if that is current, it's.
Yes, that was current as of, that was current as of Friday, which is when we always put the vacancy report in. So they probably have filled a couple more positions since then because we are still actively recruiting. But we're down to, you know, basically our last few positions to fill on the, on the certified side. So you have the latest information minus a few days.
And I was just concerned that if we still have 40 something, then the subs, are, are we hiring some eight-week long-term people and make sure they're trained so that every can go, everything can go accordingly? Because I wouldn't think you would want to do a day-by-day sub considering the eight weeks or however you're going to do it. But we just need to make sure we have people in there and people who can do the job. That was my concern.
Yeah, well, that's the stuff that we're working on right now with the I I Os and the building principals to talk about what the plan will be in this, in these cases. So, yes, we're actively in those conversations.
So every Friday, when we look there, that's our most current?
Every Friday before a board meeting, so you get.
Okay, okay. Got you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lopez and Ms. Tishman, while we're on this, is there time available next week to have the meeting that we had scheduled concerning one or two applicants?
Yeah, Dr. Win, I will get with you so you and I can get on the same page. And Ms. Tishman did tell me, I saw her yesterday and, and she, she asked about that. So she said she'll make herself available. So you and I, why don't you and I coordinate? Because I know you've got, you and I both have kind of tough schedules sometimes, so. Definitely, we should do that next week. Ms. Tishman, we'll, we'll get with you with some dates.
That's fine, that works, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the HR report?
I make a motion that we approve the Human Resource Report.
I second it.
They've been seconded, Bridgette, would you do a roll call, please?
Sure.
Okay, but.
Sorry.
Now, you still had E, I thought she had a question on E. So how would we approve it if we didn't do E?
I've already approved the consent agenda and then we could do a motion for each.
Oh, okay, got you, I'm sorry, just.
Oh, you're good, that, that, that's a good catch.
Okay, okay.
So this is just to approve the HR report, we'll get to E next, so that's what the motion is.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We will move on to letter E, the final read of the parent handbook, Ms. Humphries?
Yes, Ms. Garcia Stewart, could you give us some clarity on the change of the graduation requirements for the Sumner students? Please, it was a little bit confusing.
Absolutely, good evening, President Lopez and Mrs. Humphries, board members, Dr. Faust, Dr. Miguel. In the parent handbook, on it, it's.
You're muted there, Lisa.
Oh, that's nice. The whole own conversation. Good evening again, President Lopez, Mrs. Humphries, the board, Dr. Faust, Dr. Miguel. I wanted to review on, it's my page 51. And the parent handbook that has the graduation requirements for Sumner are aligned with all the other four high schools so that each school has a requirement of 25 credits. This actually.
Can't hear you.
It actually should have been updated last year. This change happened two years ago when we could no longer count the eighth grade toward high school credits. So it looks like or appears to be a decrease in credits, but it's the same credits for each high school because we no longer can count the eighth grade courses toward high school graduation credits. I'll also ask Dr. Miguel if she would like to add anything or Dr. pitch to that, to my comments. And hopefully that answers that for the board.
Thank you, Lisa. Janie, any other questions or anyone else?
I, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood why the, the graduation requirements were changing for Sumner students because the English is going down and the world language requirement is going down. And Lisa explained that to me earlier, that it's because they're no longer crediting their eighth grade English in foreign language. But it, on paper, it looks like their credits, their credit requirements are going down, but actually they're not.
And if I understood correctly, Lisa, that's a change that happened a couple of years ago. We just never took it off the, the parent handbook, correct?
Correct, it was my oversight, yeah. So we wanted to make sure Dr. Malone caught it and I, I made sure in our parent handbook, it was submitted with all the changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other questions? Matt, entertain a motion to approve the final read of the parent handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, Bridgette, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen.
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yager.
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you, Lisa and Dr. Miguel. Okay, so we are on to the payment of our bills.
I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Bridgette, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen.
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yager.
Stacy, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, everybody. We are now moving on to the communications section reports by Dr. Faust.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to just say thank you to the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education, to the school district, everyone. It's been a great run. We have had some good times here. We have given our students some of the best education that they could possibly have. We have increased graduation rates. We've increased our scholarship rate. We have moved reading capacity, math capacity, had great professional development, and, you know, just for the first thing, I would just like to congratulate or actually just give a kudos to everyone who worked on the Continuous Learning Plan. We, as I stated, you know, I've done several interviews and talked about how there was no blueprint, but we were well ahead of the game, and I just want to give just a shout out to everyone who worked on that. And I don't know if everyone knew that, but they took their spring break and they just worked through it and didn't complain, didn't say anything. Those individuals have been in this building since, actually, COVID. Very few took days off, so I, again, just I want to applaud them for their extra work of working along with me. You are a special group of people, and I will forever think about the work that we've done together and how we have presented things together, the principles and the hard work, and I know that you were pushed to limits that you thought you'd never, ever seen before, but I believe that they're actually more, you have more in you. Our students deserve it. Our parents deserve all of the work. I want to, you know, thank Lisa and her team, Lisa Walker and her team, for just being right there for our students and jumping on all of those incidents and making decisions for our school district that have been so impactful and, you know, just having, I'll call it award-winning attitudes towards everything that they have done, the laughing that we have done, and, you know, when times would get hard, we would laugh about things just to sometimes just ease it, but I'll go back to, you know, just the very first time of walking, walking in the building and the individuals who were in the elevator with me, and we are, you know, forever family, because we never got to do our Thanksgiving dinner, to those who told me that, you know, I brought the snow right after that Thanksgiving. You know, all of the times that I've never been as cold as I've ever seen, like, this is something I've never in my life experienced. The negative, and I think I said it wrong, it's either minus, I think, or whichever one, I get it confused, they were trying to tell me which one is which, but I am, you know, I'm just so excited to be, have been a part of a winning team, because you have just embraced this, these efforts. And again, you know, doing work as such has not been easy, and I'll never say it was easy, but you took it like champs. And for that, again, I am grateful. I'm grateful for you partnering with me to increase the educational rigor for every student in this district. Earlier today, I gave out batons, the last set of batons, and I was telling them that, you know, the four-by-four is, the four-by-one-hundred is the fastest relay. And I explained that at the convocation last year about the four-by-four relay, and, you know, sometimes in there, they were talking about how they didn't know who was going to show up to the race, and they didn't know how they were going to get it around there, but, you know, you get it around there, and it all starts with the work of our early childhood center and what they do, and then they pass that baton on to the elementary schools, and then elementary then pass that baton on to the middle school, and middle school then pass the baton on to high school. And the goal for running a race is never to look back. And so that's the thing, is that we continue to press forward. We reach and we go. We tell the person to take off, and, you know, one of the things is that you can't afford to slow down the educational process for students, because others are gaining on you. So with that Wyandotte community, I thank you, I love you. I look forward to all the work that you will continue to do, and, of course, I look forward to seeing you at some of these national conferences and then actually seeing your name in lights with the stars, because I know that there are more rock stars to be made in this district. So thank you again for just embracing me and my family as we've been here for these two years, and I look forward to, again, talking with you. Board members, my number will not change. My mom would kill me if I did, literally, she would. She doesn't drive, but she would drive to get me to make sure that I changed the phone, but I thank you. I thank you so much, and I will definitely miss all of you. So that is, you know, probably the hardest thing I've done, is to give my last comments, and, again, just thank you for everything, and we will hang in there. Okay, see you all. Take care.
Thank you, Dr. Faust, for your heartfelt words. Before I get to my remarks, I know, Dr. Miguel, you weren't on the agenda, but just if you have anything you would like to share at this moment, I would open the floor up to you as well.
You do this, Mr. Lopez. You call me without. I don't have any remarks prepared. I just want to say again how honored I am to have received the trust of the board, and I just hope to live up to your expectations. I will try my best. There is a lot of work to continue, and I am really looking forward to continue working with the team here in central office, in the schools, in the community, and with the board, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel. So I will just share a few remarks. Again, I do want to say thank you to Dr. Faust. I know we've said it several times, but we are grateful for the time that you have spent with our district and with our students and staff and leading our district to the next level, and so we appreciate your time and dedication. We wish you the best. You know, and I say that, and I mean it, and we wish you and your family the very best. You know, it's always sad to see someone go, but we appreciate the time that you've spent with us and the season that you were with us, and we've learned a lot of valuable lessons with you and along the way, and so we're grateful. And, but we're excited for you, so congratulations to you. You still have a few more days left, so don't run off anywhere. There's still plenty of work to do before Friday, so, but no, but really, thank you and congratulations, and best of luck to you, and we'll be in touch, for sure. And, Dr. Miguel, we are excited to enter into this chapter with you and to continue to lead us forward as we are working together to reopen our schools. We're very excited. So thank you for the opportunity to work alongside you and to lead our staff and our district, so just wanted to say thank you there. A few other quick comments before we continue on, and I'll ask if anyone else has anything to say, I'll open up to. I do just want to say quickly, wish a very happy birthday to Ms. Maxine Drew, who celebrated a birthday earlier this week. So we do just want to say happy, happy, happy birthday. I would sing, but you don't want that, so I won't. But we wish you a very blessed year for your birthday, so congratulations. And to Mr. Covington, who also celebrated a birthday as well yesterday, so happy birthday, Mr. Covington. So we're excited, another beautiful year for you as well and blessed year, so congratulations. And to anyone else celebrating birthdays that I don't know of, happy birthday to all of you. I also just want to give a quick shout out to Alonso Rangel. I saw our communications department put out a picture of one of our students from FL Schlegel, Alonso, who scored a thirty-one on his ACT. So we are excited for him as we continue to share amazing things from our students, so Alonso Rangel from FL Schlegel, as he enters his senior year, we are very excited, and congratulations to you and your family. Let's see, I had a couple of other things here. I do, on a more somber note, I do just want to ask and plead for, from our community. Over the past couple of days, we've seen a couple of tragic deaths by violence in our community to some young people who have lost their lives way too early. One young man at the age of eighteen, and another young man in his late teens, and another who's in a critical condition after being shot, and so this summer, we have seen violence, gun violence hit our community, it seems like even harder, and it saddens me and it hurts every time we lose a young person to some senseless violence, and so I would just ask and plead for our community to come together and to work together to stop this violence and put an end to the violence, and to let's build community, and this is a time for us to come together and support those families who have lost loved ones, and to support our students and support our community, so. KCK, our heart is with you for those families that have lost loved ones. Our hearts are with you, and whatever we can do as a district, we are here for you. I know we've got some great staff members, Lisa Garcia Stewart and her team, have been out there and supporting families who have lost a loved one, so we are here for you. So I just wanted to share that this violence that continues to plague our community needs to stop, and it hurts every time we see one of our young people lose a life, so just wanted to share that, and thank you to everyone for your continued work to bring our community together. With that, I will open up to any other comments from staff before we continue on.
Randy, I do have a question. I know sports came up, and when we voted on it, we mentioned that we may come circle back around it if the local Wyandotte County government made a different recommendation, and I was just trying to see, because, you know, we got a couple of letters, and we keep getting letters about conditioning and practice, but I don't think the board has continued that conversation to, you know, kind of align with the Wyandotte County government recommendations, so I was just wanting to see when we would have an opportunity, or I would ask this on our next board meeting, or if we have a special meeting for it to be added to that area.
Thank you, Dr. Yeager, for bringing that up. I did have that noted down, I just, sorry about that, but thank you for that, absolutely. So my understanding is the unified government will have some updated information later this week with their commission. They will have a commission meeting giving some updated information, and hopefully, we can learn some things from that meeting, and also, KESHA is having a meeting this Friday, I believe, to look at some of these issues that we're talking about, so hopefully, they can continue to give us some guidance, and I do want to say that we appreciate as a board all of the emails and folks who have been reaching out, you know, it's not a tough, it's not an easy decision when the board made that vote, and please know that we have our kids and our families' safety at heart, and, you know, it wasn't an easy thing. We've seen other districts consequently as well make very similar moves as our district did, and so I think we will continue to look at the science, at the data, at the health implications, and we'll continue to follow guidelines from the Health Department, but I think, Dr. Yeager, to your point, we need to continue to listen and to hear what's out there, so I don't know that there's anything really we can do today on that, except to say that, to let our folks know that we are listening, and we are paying attention to what the Health Department is putting out there, and we will continue this conversation. Hopefully, guidelines later this week will give us a better sense of what we need to do. I think our athletic director, Tammy, has, you know, some thoughts and potentially could give us some information if we want it, but there might be some things where they can continue to give our coaches, to work with our coaches to give our students some individualized plans that they can continue to condition at home or whatnot. But that's something that we should discuss, and we can put it on the next agenda if you'd like.
Yes, if you could put it on the next agenda, I think it would be important for us to discuss. This next thing, I want to say thank you to Dr. Biblo Irving. Tech class started last week, I believe, and, oh my goodness, this stirred the community to encourage our high schoolers, eleventh and twelfth graders, to look at tech school as an option while we're waiting to have traditional school face-to-face, because tech school is meeting face-to-face, and so I want to thank you so much for working with those families who asked if they could be added to tech or more questions about tech, how they could get more information, so thank you for getting back with their parents quickly, working with the plan, and having them work with schools to be able to give students additional options while they're, while we're in this pandemic. I saw the smiles on a lot of the students' faces in the mornings at seven o'clock, bright and early, how excited they were to just be there, so thank you so much for all that you do with Diploma Plus and continuing to push our students to a higher level to know that tech classes are awesome, and we need tech fields just as much as we need that college credit, so thank you so much for your efforts.
Hey, Randy, I just want to add in there, because I just know that our community pulls a name and they hold on to names, and and so as Stacy, as Dr. Yeager mentioned, several of us have been contacted about sports, and I just want to say it's not one person, you know, I wanted to be very clear that I'm not ignoring the messages that I'm getting. I've been tagged on things, and so I've also asked questions on the back end, and so several people have, several board members have, so I just wanted to make it very clear that we have, we have all asked, like, how do we do the right thing by our students? And how do we make sure that they are getting what they can get when it comes to scholarships and other things this year, so. So just, maybe it wasn't here on this public platform, but we all are asking that question of how do we move forward, and so knowing that there were other meetings coming up and other guidelines that would be coming, we did not want to be premature in how we address things.
And, Mr. Lopez, to add to your other comments, we have condolences and prayers to the families of the drowning victims. I have a student whose younger sister was one that drowned in the Cal River in Grandvue Lake, so that is impacting our community. I also received two emails that asked, is the district going to make a statement about the status of the, I'll just say, the investigation of the harassment charges? And the other email was from a couple people who felt that they had not received any protection against retaliation for informing and bringing issues forward, so that is, you know, something that I think the board needs to address.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Very appreciate that, and, yes.
This is Maxine Drew. Wanted to just let you all know that today I attended the legislative orientation meeting to meet some of the new representatives from different districts, but on Saturday, August twenty-ninth, from nine to twelve, they will be having a legislative committee meeting, and I will be in attendance for that, and I will be coming back with information to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Drew.
Oh, I'll say thank you, Ms. Drew, because Saturday's also a KSB board meeting. And today, I am attending the Kansas Emergency Management Act, of which Randy Watson gave a report on the navigating change, and some of the questions that continue to come up. Will people have the mandate to wear masks? You know, will that in-person contact be documented? So we'll revisit that. This, tomorrow will be the third day of that meeting, because the emergency, oh, let's say, declaration still is an issue before the state of Kansas, and it will impact, of course, our public schools.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Anyone else?
I will stay quiet tonight.
Thank you, Janie. Okay, we'll continue to move forward then. Thank you, everybody, and again, thank you, Dr. Faust, and best of luck. So now we will move on to our board. So now we will move on to our board discussion agenda item number eleven. So we have several proposed changes to policies on the agenda. We can accept all through A through H for a first read with one motion if we would like. And instead of going through each one, letter I, Mr. Goheen would like to have a brief conversation on. But I would entertain a motion to accept letters A through H for a first read on the policy.
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? All right, Bridget, would you do a roll call, please?
Well, before we go to a roll call, and, and I just need clarity. So we had, this is not the same set of procedures that we've gone over before. What's the next step? So we had this, we had one set already that we have in first read status. And now we have a second set that we'll have in first read status. So is our next step to kind of do a separate meeting to go through all of these? For, I just want to make sure I'm on the same page.
So as I understand it, so you've got policies that are identified in board items A through H, which are CF, DFE, GAAD, HAE, IC, IJ, JQ, KA, and KNA. Those are being submitted for first read. So we can come back either in a special setting, if that's what the board prefers, to go over those in the second read. I think that makes some sense, so it doesn't take up time during a regular meeting. But this is just the opportunity, the board's adopting these for first read, so they're out in the public. The public can review, make comments on them, board members can review and make comments on them. And then at the second read, we go through them. And if anybody's got changes, we make changes. If people have questions about the policies, we address those, those questions. And then those revisions are made for a third read where it comes back to the board to take action. Or if during the third read, there's further clarification, board members want, then we, it goes for a fourth read essentially. We, we modify it at that point. So my, my suggestion would be, and I think Ms. Page had kind of mentioned this, is that you do a special meeting for the second read where we can focus just on the policies, make sure everybody understands what they are, if they got questions, answer those questions. And then at a regular board meeting, after that special meeting, you guys would put them back on for a third read to approve them. But that's just my suggestion, the board can do it how it pleases.
Okay, and I respect that, Greg. So, but just to be clear though, this is a, this is a separate set of, of policies than we went through the last time. So we have two sets now.
That, that's correct. Now you've actually, we went, we went ahead and you, you guys tentatively adopted policy AC and KN that you could comply with the Title IX regulations, but those are still subject to modification. There just wasn't a reason to put them on for first read. So I would anticipate if you do the special meeting, you would have those two plus these on that special meeting.
That's exactly where my mind was, I just wanted to make sure I was following you, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, Yolanda. So any other questions or discussion? Bridget, would you please do a roll call vote?
Sure thing, Yolanda Clark?
Yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Yes, Wanda Bradley Page, yeah.
Stacy, I'm sorry, Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes, thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. And perhaps I'll have Bridget reach out to board members if we do want to have a special meeting just for those policies. Instead of taking time now, I'll have Bridget kind of coordinate with us to find a date that works for everybody. I think that's a great suggestion, thank you. Okay, letter I.
So, so here's the issue on letter I. The, the, there are three policies identified in letter I, and they all relate to tobacco use on school property and they all prohibit tobacco use on school property. Currently, the board has policies prohibiting student use and policies prohibiting use by staff members. But your policies are much shorter and different from the policies that KSB has proposed. KSB is proposing adding also a policy prohibiting patrons from bringing tobacco products or using them on school property, which I think is perfectly fine. I just need some direction from the board as to whether the board prefers to keep the policy more simple, like the, the board's current policy, or whether you want the more robust policy that KSB is recommending, so that you can have the, the one in front of you that you ultimately will adopt and consider is the one that, that is what the board wants. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense. I do have a question, because in, in the KMA policy, it does extend it to parents, contractors, volunteers, visitors on any district policy. So if they're, and, and it includes vaping as well. And so.
And that's not only, not only district property, but district activities or events as well.
Okay, so if the, we have an event and someone is vaping, for instance, a, a parent or, or contractor, what have you, then who's responsible for ensuring that, that the policy is going to be carried out? So is that our principals or how? I'm just trying to get an understanding of who would be the enforcer of those.
Whatever administrator would be in charge of the event. So if it's like a activity where it's a sporting event, it would be, if the school athletic director's there or the school principal's there, that would be the individual would be in charge of that. If it's an event that is a district level event, it could be up to the superintendent or the designated superintendent to enforce that or, or other administrators that are present during that event. And with respect to individuals who are not students or not employees, the recourse is simply to ask them to leave the event. And you potentially could prohibit them for future events, but that's, it's just a prohibition on them using the, the tobacco products or, while they're at the activity or while they're on school property.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
That just makes sense to extend it, that no one, student, guests, and someone working for us should be smoking, vaping, whatever, all of the above on our property. Don't allow that to happen.
So Mr. Goheen, is there signage now to prohibit that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know if you have signage on your buildings or not that say tobacco products are prohibited or tobacco use is prohibited. That's a good question. It certainly is, it's certainly in like your student code of conduct and it's certainly prohibited by board policy with regard to staff members. But whether you have something posted on your, your district properties, I don't know.
Well, probably would be a proactive move so that someone could not automatically say, I didn't know.
Certainly.
They can always say, I didn't see, but.
I agree.
Yeah, but I think that's a great point, is that you adopt a policy like this, it's going to prohibit it sort of universally, then you need to have some signage that indicates that, so people can't say they didn't know.
So to clarify, maybe Kelly Tishman can answer that. We know that some of our staff do smoke or what have you. Is there currently a designated smoking area or what would be the expectation for that?
There, there shouldn't be, because you, you guys prohibit by policy already staff members from smoking on school property. Now, I, I suppose somebody could go out into their car and do it, but I, that still would technically be on school property and still would technically be a violation of your policy. So the days of having the smoking permitted in the teacher's lounge and things like that are long gone.
No, I wasn't saying at the building though, right? I don't remember those days, Greg, I, I'm not part of those days.
I, I vaguely remember when, as a first-year high school student, I think they had even a smoking lounge for the seniors, as I recall. But that's just not, that's not their current environment. And right now, it is prohibited right now for, for any staff member or any student on school property or a school activity. You don't allow or permit it. But the expansion would be other individuals who are on the property or school activities. And that includes things like chewing tobacco and vaping and all those types of things. The only thing that would be permitted would be nicotine patches and, you know, the, the nicotine gun that's meant to, to help people, you know, kick the smoking habit as opposed to actual smoking products. And those are, those technically have nicotine, so they technically would be banned, but there's an exception in, in these draft policies for that.
So do you want us to make a motion to extend this today? You want us to take action on this one now?
No, I don't want to action, I just wanted to make sure I had solid direction, because I didn't want to recommend a policy that the board wasn't in favor of, if that makes sense. So if that's the case, what I would suggest doing, if that's what you're in favor of, then you adopt the KSB recommended ones for first read. And they're attached, as, as well as your current policy is attached. And then we can walk through the specifics of that in the second read. But I, the KSB one is fine. I just didn't want to make a bigger, I didn't want to come in and make a recommendation to the board that you expand your, your prohibition on smoking policies without talking to the board first.
And, and Dr. Wynn stated something that after we do this, we do need to get the signage up. So no one complete ignorance, that we need to jump on that as soon as possible.
Agreed with that.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we accept the KSB first read for the policies, GAOC, JCDAA, and KMA.
So moved.
Thank you.
And moved, and Yolanda, was that a second?
Yep, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Bridget, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Wanda Bradley Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And again, to Dr. Wynn's point, I think that was excellent. If we could ensure that, you know, what we need to do to make sure that we have appropriate signage in places, I don't know if we need to, we need a report on, just to make sure that signage is where it needs to be or if we need to purchase and, and provide signage. If you could let us know, that way we're, we know what, what we need to do. So thank you, Dr. Wynn, for that observation. Okay, so we will move on. Next agenda item is an executive session. So I would entertain a motion for the board to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel or protect the privacy interests of the parties involved in Diploma at seven forty-five for fifteen minutes, so coming out at eight o'clock.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page?
Wanda Bradley Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Right, thank you. You should have the Zoom, if not, email me or text me and I'll get it to you. Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to come back into open session, please?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to come back into open session. I will do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Bradley Page? Valdina, I'm sorry, are you, was that, yes? Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Aker?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, everybody. We are back in open session. Again, I just want to thank the entire board and staff for your work tonight. Thank you, Dr. Faust, best of luck to you, but you still have three hard days of work, so don't. And Leslie, thank you for your first board meeting as board clerk and hopefully we didn't scare you off, so. Thank you so much. And with that, no final comments, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.